On the clock, I would call this a regular meeting with the Bethel Board of Selectment Order for Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And first order of business is public comments. Do we, do we have anybody?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I don't, I don't think we have anybody waiting to speak, so I'm gonna go on to correspondence. Any, that's okay. Any, any late breaking correspondence? All right. We'll skip, we'll go on then to first selectments report, couple of things to let you know. Well, hopefully, this will be the last time I talk about COVID in a, in a regular report, at least maybe we could skip a couple and things that seem to be kind of trending back to normal. The last two weeks, our average cases per one hundred thousand has fallen to six point one. We, so we are just a pair above the, the green zone. So we're still in the yellow zone, but it's dropping. And that's a two-week average, so the, the difference from week two to week one, the most recent week, is pretty dramatic. So I fully expect this to drop below five next week. So that's going in the right direction. The positivity rate is three point one. The vaccination rate is climbing to over eighty percent. So we are trending in the right direction, and I'm hoping that this, this is a entering the endemic phase where we can kind of get things back to normal, especially for our small businesses and for people who haven't been able to, to do much while this has gone on. So on that, on that score, there were a couple of things I want to just highlight. I had the pleasure this week, or the privilege, last week actually, of participating in a couple of, of nice events. One of them was a, a special celebration that was put together by Mrs. Hannah Littman. And Hannah is one of the people behind the, the fan club for the Bethel Sharks. And just to give you an idea, I'm sure you guys have seen the Bethel Sharks, but this was a, an anonymous pair of Bethel teens who decided, right when the lockdown began, that it would be a fun thing to do, bring some cheer to people to get these really cool shark outfits, and just go around at random and, and just to make people smile. And nobody knew who they were for two years. It turned into a regular thing where businesses would invite them to openings, to special events. They, they, they participated in many food drives. The Bethel Sharks would had their own Facebook page. They would get people to come to the different drives to, to help people get through the pandemic. Several people started making shark masks and bumper stickers and bumper magnets for, to celebrate the sharks. And all in all, it was, it turned into something that really helped people, helped the community kind of get through the, the darkest days of the, of the lockdown. So I had the privilege of presenting a proclamation at Berry School, which although the Sharks were remaining anonymous, at least up until yesterday, and I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say their names, but one of them is now in college, and the other one is still a Bethel High School senior. But they did, but they both went to Berry School when they were younger. So we, we chose Berry School and Representative, State Representative Rahab Ali Brennan presented a proclamation on behalf of the state legislature, and I did one on behalf of the town. And so in, in recognition of what they did to, you know, little, little acts of kindness to help people get through the, the worst days of the lockdown. Similarly, we had a, I had a, a proclamation for Spice Restaurant. And I'm gonna single them out because they opened up, they, they had their three-year anniversary, so they had really just gotten on their feet when the governor shut down restaurants. And, you know, one of the things that the Sharks and others did was really put together a community-wide effort to encourage people to order out, to order takeout, to keep our restaurants in business. So, but, but Spice in particular had, their, their timing couldn't have been worse in terms of opening a brand-new business, and then the lockdown occurred. So they've gotten through it, and things are going very well. And then the last thing I just want to note, with, with a lot of help from our Economic Development Office, I want to thank the EDC Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Janice Christianik for her help. The, our, our favorite movie theater, Bethel Cinema, now known as Greenwood Features, is, they haven't done a, a big grand opening yet. They are planning to do something. They, they've had kind of a soft opening about two weeks ago, but they are back in business, and they are teaming up with the restaurant next door, Taproot, to do some special things. They've renovated the inside of the theater. So really happy to see, you know, new businesses start up and, and survive and thrive during this, this period of time. So I just wanted to congratulate them, congratulate the Sharks, congratulate Spice, and congratulate the folks at Greenwood Features for, for sticking with it and, and, you know, bringing their business to our town. I think that's, that speaks very well. And just so you know, our vacancy rate is still very low, or I should say, our occupancy rate in, in commercial spaces is still ninety-eight percent. So Bethel is in pretty good shape and doing quite well through that. Not that there aren't still some, some challenges that we had. I think quite a few businesses signed up for the, the Small Business Grant Program that EDC put together. We were doing a second round of that. And businesses could get up to five thousand dollars just by, you know, explaining their circumstances. And so several of our Greenwood Avenue businesses took advantage of that, and that helped them a great deal. So that's my report for today, and I'll open up the floor to Rich and Brian. If you guys have any questions or comments. Anything to add? Okay. Great. Well, we'll move on. Geraldine, I see you're, you're with us. I did want to make one announcement. I'm, I'm going to table the firing range, the Jakub, Jakubski Humes, or I'm gonna make a motion to table the, the architects' design for the firing range, the bid waiver, and the Gordian work on the municipal center, which for reasons that I'll explain when we get there. But if you were, if you were online with us today, for those, I just wanted to let you know, I didn't have a chance to call you before I, before I, before I made that announcement. But going to move, I'll, I'll explain further when, when I get to that part of the agenda. But now I'm gonna move on to item number five, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve? Hello?
That's, that's coming up right there.
Okay. Okay, so any questions or corrections on those? Hearing none, I'll try your minds. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. I'm gonna make a motion right now to add under five, I'll call it five A, we'll make it the next item, a report from the Public Site and Building Commission by Chairperson Nancy Ryan. So we, you have her written synopsis, but somehow that escaped my attention in putting it on the agenda. So I'll just make a motion that we officially add it to the agenda. So I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are now at five A, a report from the Public Site and Building Committee, and Nancy, I'll turn the floor to you.
Thanks. We have the, I think, a report that I wrote up, was part of the electronic documents that were sent out, so I'm not gonna read it. But just a couple of high points, we're looking on closeout of the school projects. We have our CO. We, prior to that, we got letters of substantial support from the architect. And closeout, basically, it's a lot of people, that's being done by Rizzo with some contractors, and making sure that all of their paperwork is in place, bills being paid, et cetera. There's, the main item that we're still working on resolving is some of the landscaping issues for both schools and the Johnson soccer field. There were reports that were given by both the architect and the landscape design architect. And those are forwarded to Rizzo. There's discussion back and forth. And we're working towards an agreeable solution for all of this. And then, police station, the coating on the firing range needs to be very effective. Had no reports of problems, and I specifically, a couple of times when I knew we were gonna have heavy rains, emailed Chief Pugner and Lieutenant Durkin asking, could someone go check, and they said it was going dry, so that's great. And on the firing range, we, I guess I skipped out the firing, or, sorry. But we are working towards the fit out of the firing range. It's gonna be part of the discussion tonight, but we're gonna wait till we get some more information on that. We'll look at that when we get there. I had it on there, it just disappeared, sorry. So that, that's it, the firing range part, the fit out of the firing range is in progress as far as design, planning, et cetera. And on the municipal center renovations, we're looking at basically wanting to do the GP room lobby first. And so we have some information put together with that. We need to complete that so we can come up with a project budget and basically how we're gonna go forward in getting that done. So if there's any specific questions.
Going, going back to the schools, just, could you just elaborate a little bit more on, on the landscaping? Good, because there, as I understand it, there was seed that was put down last year. The subcontractor said that it was mowed too soon, so it needed to be reseeded. So what, where does that sit today?
So there's, there's that part of it, but there's also some parts of, is, so as you're driving up Willsey, you have Rock, into the schools, we got Rockwell on the right and Johnson on the left. There's two parts of Rockwell where there are very steep slopes.
Yeah.
And when those were first graded and seeded, one was done before the other. The one that comes off, the first one you see is coming off the playground. And it's got a lot of ruts and gullies in it. So to, to most of us who have looked at it, it looks to me like it was, it washed out before the seed really took. So the grading was done, nice and smooth. They seeded and some, you know, obviously there were some rains, et cetera. This was a whole year ago fall, when there was water washing dirt, dirt, topsoil, et cetera, washing down the road into Willsey. They had to clean all that up, protect it until the following spring, where they seeded it, and then the grass started growing, but there's still ruts and gullies in it. So we think it needs to be regraded. Not that people are gonna be running around on it, but still, you know, it's much easier to maintain and mow grass when it's not all ready. So I believe there's back and forth going between the landscaper and Rizzo, who's responsible. There are parts where they say the grass was mowed too soon. I don't know if that's the case, but it's finger pointing, kind of. And then the soccer field, this whole kind of separate issue in that, and Beth, Kevanga, from playing in something, said that she feels it's, the compaction is too tight, and it's not a good, it's not good for kids to be running around on it. If you're looking at something where a lot of topsoil was stored, or, or soil, just all the back, anything that needed to be gotten out of the way, stored there through the project, heavy machinery was running around on it over, on and off through a couple of years, how much compaction was there before they then put down a layer of topsoil and, and seeded it. So that's being looked at, too. There's been some testing done. Bethland did her own, with a shovel and digging, and feels that the compaction's too tight. So that's gonna have to be looked at. That is being looked at, too.
Okay.
Specific issues and areas where we, we say, here are these slopes, and there's a couple of areas where grass just didn't grow. So that's gonna have to be seeded, not now, but maybe in a month. Spring is a good time to seed, but fall is a better time, but with, we're not, we're not, we're not one to wait for fall. You can't always wait, you know, if you have a construction project going on and you've got dirt sitting there, you've gotta get something growing before it starts to wash away.
How about the roof warranty? So is that, is that finally put to bed?
I, you sent the stuff out, and I guess we have to wait to hear a answer back from, do they need other information?
Yeah.
Or is that it? And put it all file and be done with it?
I, I did get a email back from the guy from JD Solar, and they think that that's a, that's a hundred percent. So I just, I guess, I, I think the roof, the, the two subcontractors come out and have to come out and do one last inspection.
Right.
Which I, I approve the, the funding for that, the invoice for that.
Subcontractors or the suppliers? Was it John's Manville or Carlisle and Carlisle?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's.
The manufacturers of the.
Yeah, right.
I think they do, and I don't know if the, the installers, young developers, just also, also.
Yeah, you're right.
And then that kind of.
Yeah.
What's all, all the people will be in one place, so that when it's, it needed, because there's a, I think, one-year warranty on the installation from the installers, and then a twenty-year warranty on the materials.
Okay.
Nancy, I know slopes, but I thought you, you had taken those slopes away from the original contractor and had subvers.
We're not gonna, we're trying, we're in the process still of getting, this is part of the closeout paperwork, too. If we feel that the contractor, who was supposed to be the landscaper, didn't do it correctly, why should we pay them and then pay someone else to remediate it? So if we're still owing them money, that's why there's talk happening, why the reports came back, again, from the landscape designer who came out and, and checked everything out.
So currently, are those slopes washed out?
They're not totally washed out. There's grass growing on them, but they're kind of rutty, and if, if I, you know, running on a slope would be kind of hard, but we all stood on the slope and ran sideways across the slope, blindfolded, we trip and fall. There's no, it's not smooth at all. There's ruts and.
Well, not longer to the meeting, but some person went in and did the final landscaping.
No, they haven't done anything. They gave us a quote.
Oh, that, oh, that's, they didn't go back and, and do all that?
We asked them to do something outside the scope of the project.
Right.
Last year.
Right.
Is that, as you.
This is a different area.
As you go past Rockwell towards the middle school, there's a whole scrubbing area that was outside the scope of the project that looked like that, I would say. So we had them kind of clean up all the scrub, kind of drag some stuff out of there, and do some easily, easily maintainable plantings.
So that's not the same area that we're talking about? Okay.
We did get a quote from them to use as, all right, it's gonna cost us this much if we had to fix it. Can you guys, will you guys fix it, meaning the people who were originally hired to do it? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question about the municipal center, in, in their proposal that we're not doing the ceiling, the vaulted ceiling anymore?
No, that was something that was looked at as part, as being taken out to save some money, and for the, because that's gonna require a basement up top above that, because of the space up in there, there's tile, it's got asbestos in it, et cetera. And cutting through, there's steel beams going, I mean, it was a whole part of the process, which I think would add considerable cost. It would be lovely.
Well, that was part of the project to make it look lovely there, and not a dungeon in that area.
It will look lovely, because it'll be painted, new ceiling, new floor, got bathrooms.
Did your whole committee vote on that?
That was something that, when we started looking at it with this Gordian group, the project management group, that was one thing that was looked at as, we could possibly do it more quickly and less expensively with that, not being. We looked at it as, as at our last meeting, and it didn't come up as an issue with people wanting to make sure it was in there.
I'm disappointed.
We can look at it, we can have them add it as.
Or even do it as a cost alternate or something.
Well, that, that's one of the things I think we have to talk about.
Yeah.
When we, when we set, schedule another meeting for that.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Rich?
No.
Frank?
I don't have a problem with taking that.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Nancy.
All right.
Appreciate you coming.
Problem, I'll give you one and another one in a couple of months.
What's that?
I'll give you another update in a couple of months.
Yep, okay.
It's gonna be taken off of this list.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe more of the stuff will be, I'm sure some of the stuff will be done by then. Okay, moving on, item number six, consideration of tax refunds. I'll put a motion on the floor that we authorize tax refunds at the request of Paula Usher, the tax collector, in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. And these are due to overpayment of taxes. Is there a second? Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Item number seven, consideration of IT upgrades for the Bethel Fire Department and the Stony Hill Fire Department, as recommended by the Fire Commission. So you have a list of items. And unfortunately, our, the representatives from the fire department, who were here to talk about this, got called to a fire, an actual fire, so they're not here, but I will put this on the floor as a motion to approve IT upgrades for the, to fire, for both fire departments, in the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred, four dollars and eighty-four cents. Okay, so what this is, you, you guys will remember that we, one of the things that we approved recently was a new computer-aided dispatch system. And this not only involves the police department, but it also provides some enhancements for the fire departments, and will streamline their, not only their reporting, but it will give them the ability to capture much more data that they can use for fire prevention and education, and reporting to the state fire marshal, which they're required to do. But in order to do that, you're back.
We're back.
Just, you, that thirty seconds ago, I put the motion to approve the IT upgrades on the floor. So we have a motion on the floor to approve it. I was just starting to explain that this, this ties into the new CAD system, and you guys need some, so if you're gonna use it, you gotta have the equipment to, to use it. So I'll give the floor to you if you wanna explain any more about that.
Um, pretty much that's what it is. It's the iPads for the vehicles, and the charging units that's the Havas to go with the next gen. So we have the ops, you know, the vehicles. And the rest of that is some IT stuff inside of our house. Some desktops, and a couple, and some laptops. For the officers, do their work.
Okay.
Are there vehicles, or you know?
Uh, what is it, six?
Six, and this includes the Havas on the, the actual unit.
Yeah.
Where are you guys purchasing?
Um, iPads.
iPad.
Yeah, whatever Nick spec'd out there. Nick did the spec-ing out of the, of the iPads, for what we need. Um, right now, we have one currently in our engine six that we've been using for two and a half years now, and it works excellent.
All right.
And the Fire Commission, they need, and they discussed this, and it went over, and they revised some of the, some things were taken out, some things were added, so.
Okay.
It's been vetted by the Fire Commission.
Right. All right. Any other questions? What's that?
We'll call them off.
Okay, all right. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Now I noticed that item number eight is the Havas docking station, but I, how many of those do you need?
For down, for South Street, we.
It was six and six, wasn't it?
Six for us, and probably six and six.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on.
It was a total of twelve.
Yeah.
Okay. So what, we didn't, we didn't get a total on that. We just said.
Okay. I believe to twelve hundred piece for wiring installed and everything included.
Yeah, that included installation, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
It is not three hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah, that's, that's a different dock.
That's the dock station.
Is it?
Yeah. What, let me see, let me print off the.
So it's twenty thousand.
No, the, the twenty, I, I don't see any, I don't see the docking stations on this that we just approved.
And what we just approved, no, it was a separate item. Because they, they came in with the laptop equipment first, and then they said, oh, we need the docking station for it. So, yeah, we didn't put it all in the same motion.
For the vehicles, right? Yeah.
According to the Fire Commission minutes of March eighth, there was twelve, twelve-month docking stations, in a amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, four hundred, which included installation.
Thirteen thousand, four hundred, is that correct?
Fourteen thousand, four hundred.
Fourteen thousand, four hundred?
Right, for twelve of them, and that the price, and it also indicates in the minutes that the price includes installation.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, thank you for doing that, Marty, because I, I didn't have the, the minutes in front of me. So I'll make a motion that we approve the Havas docking stations, in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, four hundred.
Oh, the twelve.
What's that? Yeah, Marty just pulled the, the total off of the, the total was fourteen, four.
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor, and by the way, these, we, we recommend to the Board of Finance that these come from capital non-recurring. But that's, that's their call.
Um, I'm sorry, who made the motion? Brian.
Brian.
And Mike, I don't know who it was, Rich.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to, well, this will wind up being the last item on the agenda, before I get to the items that I want to recommend at the table. Consideration of the security system completion for the Bethel Fire Department is recommended by the Fire Commission. Do you guys have any info on that?
Yeah, so it was started three, two years ago.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, right before COVID, and it got stopped because of COVID. They started to install part of the system. So this is to finish off what's already been installed. We have all the equipment, it's just sitting in boxes in the car.
Oh, okay, so, so this is.
And it was to add some other stuff that we noted, that we noticed that was forgotten on the first one.
So this is, the amount is seven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven, right?
Yeah, at least, or whatever you have.
Yeah.
It says thirteen thousand, or on the backside.
Oh, yeah, that included the locks, the one that showed like.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, because, yeah, we get.
Thirteen thousand, three, fourteen, oh, seven, correct?
Correct. That's what they're saying, the total cost is, and I don't know if they put tax in there or not.
It's not tax.
Yeah.
Matt, the minutes, the minutes say it's twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars for the completion of entry and security system upgrades.
These are seven thousand for Stony Hill, and this is for Bethel Fire?
No, it's all for, it's all for Bethel.
Right.
You have, you should have two different quotes there.
All right, I see, yeah, so this is the mobile lock service for seven, seven thousand and thirteen.
And then the alarms.
Okay.
The total of that is twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one.
Even?
Even. That, yeah, that's what the motion was made, not to exceed.
All right. All right, well, I put a motion on the floor that we approve amount not to exceed twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars for the completion of the electronic lock system for Bethel. about not to exceed twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars for the completion of the electronic lock system for Bethel Volunteer Fire Department, so. Okay, any further questions, comments? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, thank you very much, glad you could come back. Okay, so for, we've got items nine, ten, eleven and twelve. Let me just explain, I had a conversation with the town attorney as well as some of the folks involved in this, including Nancy and the chief. I'm going to make a motion that we table items ten, eleven and twelve. Ten is consideration of the proposal from Jakunski Humes. Eleven is consideration of a bid waiver for procuring the firing range equipment. And number twelve is consideration of the proposal from Gordian to, to begin to work on the municipal, municipal center GP room lobby renovations. The reason for this is that when the town attorney was looking over the proposals and looking at the materials from Action Target on, on that particular job, there were some questions that I can't answer, some technical questions that I, you know, because these things are, involve a lot of money, I want to make sure we're doing them right and properly. And as you, if you've been watching the news, there's a scandal brewing in Hartford where there was a, like a bid steering accusation made against a, a member of the Lamont administration. And I want to make sure that we are one hundred percent above board and that we're not inadvertently getting into something that we shouldn't, so I want to, I want to make sure that we've really done the work on this and we can answer all the questions. So that especially applies to the bid waiver part, I understand what, why they, there was a bid waiver requested. It had to do with the fact that Action Target was originally designed, it was, it was vetted against the other company that makes this stuff as part of the original project. But that was like going back four years ago at this point, so I want to make sure that we are getting the best possible equipment for our police force and as well as the, the best possible cost for our taxpayers. And some of those questions between the, the attorney and I, neither one of us really knew the answer, so that's why I'm going to put that, recommend that we table that and hold it for a special meeting. Okay, then same thing with the Gordian Group. Gordian is a company that is, works with the State Department of Administrative Services. They get state approved contractors. But yet, we're still not a hundred percent sure why that would exempt them from this, from the bidding process. So I think what I'd like to do is have the town attorney look at this and have the representatives from Gordian come and present to us as well at a special meeting, so. So we have a motion on the floor to table those three items to a special meeting next week to be, to, to be announced. So you seconded that, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any, any questions?
Yeah, and also I'd like to see bottom line dollar balance, you know, what is the firing range going to cost us in total?
Oh, complete, yes, that's correct.
And all, all actually all the projects.
Right. Okay. What's that?
Should I answer or not yet?
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll get you to the meeting next week, because I have to resolve that question about electrical and if, if they're, if it's, if it's included in the, the, the action target estimated cost or, or not, or if it's an add-on cost. There's a, there's several things that the town attorney had some questions about and I, I concur, so. I think we, we want to be safe on that and make sure we're doing it the right way, so. You're not off the hook, you'll, you'll be bad. Okay, so we have a motion to table those three items to a special meeting, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, all right, hold off, yeah, go ahead.
So we have a consideration of proposal. That's just for them to design the range, or they already designed it. Because it seems, you know, the, the way I recall loading on this is we were going to go step by step. That we weren't just going to rush in and say, here's the cost that we're going to go step by step.
Yeah.
You know, so we don't make any mistakes and make sure.
Right.
So it would just seem to me going for a bid waiver before we can have a proposal from the architects, it was like, we're kind of.
Well, actually, if you.
Not doing what we said.
If you were, if, this is actually two parts, one of these things was a bid waiver for Action Target and we're, we're going to table that. The other is a proposal from Jakunski Humes to finish, to, to do the, the, do the spec work to finish outfitting the, the firing range itself, so it can receive the HVAC material, equipment and the, the action target equipment. So that's a, that's a separate thing.
So the action target equipment needs to be plugged in, let's say, somewhere. So Action Target's proposal includes the equipment and the, and the, and the installation of the equipment, the manufacturer of equipment, installation of it and the HVAC specific for that firing range. And the installation of it. It doesn't include who's going to run the wiring, electrical outlets, lighting, things like that. So Jakunski Humes is working in conjunction with Action Target will design specifically where wiring needs to be run, where the outlets, where they need to be lighting, things like that.
But to your point, Brian, you're, you're right, we, we do need to make sure that these costs are aligned, we have to have them with more specific detail, we need to make sure that this is not over a million dollars too. Because that, that changes how we, how we go about this, that would require a referendum if it's, if it does go over that, so. My apologies that we got, got this onto the agenda without having some of these questions answered, but I, I think we need to dig a little bit deeper and make sure that we do this properly, so we'll, we'll schedule a meeting next week to, just for that. Okay? All right. Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table those three items, those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, and that concludes the agenda, or came to motion to adjourn?
You go.
All right, then I'll make the motion to adjourn. Okay. Those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, then I have a question. Is everybody available next Tuesday, the twenty second, for a special meeting?
I am.
Really? The twenty second sticks out in my head for some reason, but I don't have my work scheduled with me. What time, what time are you going to do that?
We would do it at seven.
That's okay.
Okay, so then let's just plan on meeting next week, Nancy, will that work for you? Okay, so let's just plan on that unless you hear from me.
Yeah, all right, thank you.